Hi.
Recording in progress.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals is meeting tonight on Wednesday, September 17, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room Number 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person or at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if we have technical problems interrupting the remote connections. With that said, we have -- our meeting is open.
Uh, oh, excuse me. There's continuance.
Yeah. If you want to use the microphone that's on the podium?
On the podium.
You might want to just know for bre- that we have a board member on.
We have, uh, One Pine Street is going to be our first, um, hearing. They have a special permit and variance which is continued from 8:20, 25, and we also have a board member, Christopher Metcalf, who's online with us also.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road, and I'm here representing the applicant, Claude Elias, on this application. Back in July, I believe, we had our first meeting with the Zoning Board of Appeal. It was via Zoom, and I went through the project. I might do a quick, uh, rear run just to refresh your memory. So basically, we're here to, uh, make some modification to the existing site and the, as you can see from the, uh, from the board, this, the site is in the C1 commercial district currently. Uh, the site is about 1.972 acres, but, uh, most of the site is covered with wetlands in t- to the rear. So the portion of the site that is currently developed is about 0.8 acres. Currently, there's a 3,600-square-foot building on-site. You're all familiar with the site. Access to the site is via two existing driveways, one from Dedham Street and one from, uh, the, uh, apologize, the, uh, Pine, uh, this. I believe it's Pine, yes. Pine and then, so they're both full-access driveways. Currently, there's some landscape on the site. The, the site was used for a landscape business. The owner, uh, would like to make modification to add, uh, three pumps and underground fuel storage tanks to support a gasoline filling station. The use is allowed by a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeal in the C1 zone, and, uh, also, we applied for a setback relief on the canopy setbacks, and, uh, I can go if you can zoom out a little bit, Richard, if you don't mind, on the site, so I can go through. Uh, basically, we're going through the site plan review with the planning board and also conservation because of the, uh, wetland to the rear of the property. So we applied for an notice of intent and a site plan review and site plan special permits. We need a couple of special permits also from the planning board, uh, so this is in concurrence with your application. Uh, unfortunately, last month, we had the continue hearing. There was no quorum, so we couldn't have the hearing, but tonight is the hearing, and I would like to, what we're here tonight basically for two, uh, and, uh, two, two items, the special permit, which is the use, and also the relief on the setback. And I know at the last meeting, you had some questions, and I, I have the answers, and, uh, Richard, you might, I mean, there's a question whether this existing pump is, this well was active, is not active. Uh, you wanted a distance, I believe the distance was 150 feet from the tanks to the, uh, to the pump house and about 200 feet from the pump house to the closest pump. Uh, the, uh, the use, you had some questions about the use, and I think, Richard, for the one, no, the use, the, uh, the setback, I believe, whether the, uh, there was a variance granted for another gas station or something like that, and I don't, uh...
So the, uh, the, well, there was a question, but it wasn't variant. So the one that's on Dedham Street was set at the...
Is correct.
Is correct.
Is correct. The one in the center of town, actually over here, was interesting. It was actually, applied for a special permit to expand the non-conforming structure, so it was interesting, which, have to get into the weeds of the merits of that, but that's, that's what was granted.
When Daley's was built, when was Daley's built?
A long time ago.
Over 20 years ago.
When it was remodeled.
Over 20 years ago.
That's not a long time ago in Yankee Land.
That was the, that was the remodel.
Okay. But they've had pumps there for...
Oh, they've had pumps there since as far as I can ever remember.
All right.
Fifty-something years.
So they're, like, canopy requirements and anything like that.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Which are required for fire safety, so...
Yeah, and then they went to a brand, they bran- there was a time when they had to put the canopy on.
Right. They have the canopy for fire suppression.
Yeah. They would have needed a variance for it, though.
Canopies are for fire suppression.
They have to have a canopy nowadays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have self...
They actually didn't have fire suppression when they put in the canopy.
They didn't.
One second. Sorry about that.
Mm-hmm. But that doesn't...
That's, no, right. That's relevant.
After the, have to talk, but you have to...
Anyway, so also, you had some question, some concerns about the sidewalks and some, some of the site items, and we said, "We're going through the site plan review," and those items were actually brought up at the site plan review, and they engaged a peer engineer to, to review the projects, and we're working with them on resolving also all the issues. So basically, all the site, uh, components would be addressed with the peer review engineer. As far as the, this, the, the various, I just wanted to point out that also, the existing building that is on-site is an existing non-conforming as far as setback. Uh, the, if you look at the shape of the lot, and again, I think I pointed that at the last meeting, so if you calculate all the frontage because of the shape of the lot, it's, it's a, it's a corner lot with, with the curve along the, the intersection of Dedham and Pine, we have 480 feet of frontage. If you multiply that by, by, uh, by 70 feet, I get almost an acre. So if you take that, the setback, the front setback required is almost half a day a lot. Take, so if you take actually the 200-foot top of bank, which is this line here, uh, and if you take the, the Zone 2 line, which Zone 2 is in the back, so we're trying to keep everything outside Zone 2, we're trying to keep everything outside the 200-foot riverbank, you would only, and, apply the setback, you would have this sliver piece of land that you can, that's, would meet the, the setback. Half of it is on top of the existing building. It encompasses about 3,100 square feet, which is 3.5% of the total lot. So as you can see here, this is really a lot that meets the, the, if we go through the state statutory requirement for, for a variance, you got the soil, you got the wetlands in the back, you got the shape, the topography of the lot, so it's really all there. It's not something that you set a precedent for. This is, this is a typical case that we can hang your hat and say, "Yeah, this, this, this qualifies for variance." As far as the use, also, I'd like to say this, uh, this is Dedham Street. It's a pretty, it's a kind of high, uh, state highway. It's all developed with businesses all around. It's not kind of, you know, uh, unusual for, for the setting. There's gas station down the street, not too far, so there's similar businesses in the area. So I believe this is, this is what we have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but, you know, we would really, would like to get us a clear, uh, direction here, because if we can't get the variance or we can't get the, the special use, uh, permit, we can't really continue with this project. But we are going full speed with the site plan review and, and conservation at the same time, but, uh, we kindly ask for your support of this project.
What's the existing building setback?
Uh, the existing, uh, I, I can, I can tell you what the existing, it's... 73. The building is right here. 73.8 and 70.7. 70 point, yeah, 70.7, correct. 73.8 from the other street.
So the, so the building conforms to the setbacks?
Uh, not, not from Dedham Street, because, uh, uh, because, because this is on the curve, you don't, you don't apply the setback on a straight line. You follow the, the layout of the lane, so... Pretty close. So this is, yeah, it is pretty close. It's probably within, uh, 10 feet. Yeah, yeah. But, but again, I, it, I've done, I've been, I've, I've been doing this for 30 years. I've been over, uh, all the, any boards you can imagine off in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's true, a canopy is considered a structure under the state's definition, but if you look here, it's, canopy is not a building, doesn't have a closed, uh, walls.
It doesn't have mass, though.
It's still a structure.
It has lights.
It is a structure. I said, I said it's a structure. I'm not saying it's not a structure. It is a structure, but it's an accessory structure. Most of the time, when we go for any variances, if you apply 70 feet for the canopy, and then you need to space the building between, you will never be able to do this unless, you know, we knock the building down, which I believe at the first meeting, I might, when I first met my client, and I looked at this project, before I came to the town, I Googled the area, you know, I Googled, you know, you go on GIS and you look at this and you see the, and I said, "We need to take the building down." I, I agree. And, and he goes, "No, we're not touching the building." He said, "This building is a landmark in the town." It's not. Hasn't been here that long. Hasn't been here long at all. Bye.
But to the point, though, that it may not be long, but to the Palmville neighborhood, that is a building of significance to them, so...
That's not the grain chow.
No. I'm not suggesting it's not...
They might, there might be people who are...
It's not Daley's.
...that's the structure for the New England barn vernacular that the existing building process.
It's a, it's a steel structure.
Tim, you have a question?
Yes, a couple of questions. There was a question brought up last time from, from Mr. Brogan, I think. I don't know if it was answered or not. It may not be pertinent, but it might be helpful. Um, was the, was there ever a variance request for that site?
No.
I know we talked about, okay.
No.
That was one question. The other thing is, I understand the, the special permit request, and I think I understand the variance request, and you, you had two prongs to it. You had the shape. I'm not really, I don't think it's such a unique shape, and that's fine. That's just my personal view of it right at the moment, um, but it really comes down to soil conditions, I think, and, and I think, just, I just want to clarify your argument on soil conditions, um, that it's really, it, it's a condition. It, it's, it's the Wetlands Protection Act and things like that that create the soil conditions, I believe. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah, and, and, and Zone 2, the aquifer 2, you know, so this is something that we can...
Okay.
The water protection district. So you, you can't really, I mean, we don't, we, we can't go beyond this line, and we try to push everything out of there as, as, as practical, you know, as possible.
Uh, wetland soils would be a soil condition. The aquifer itself is not particularly...
So you're, you're telling us that you cannot put the pumps behind the building because of the Zone 2?
Absolutely. And the 200-foot, uh, river, uh, bank.
The river front, in fact.
Yeah, put it there because of the river.
Yeah.
And to meet setback, that canopy has to go 75 feet back. Correct. Right? So you're not looking at, you're not looking for a 10-foot variance, you're looking for...
50.
You're looking for the whole thing. I mean, you got 25, yeah, you're looking for a 50...
50-foot variance.
50-foot variance. He has 25 feet of frontage that needs 75-foot requirement.
Yeah, because of the, because of the zone it's in.
Because...
Well, I mean, if it was my house, it would only needs to be 50.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a different...
It's because of the lot, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, in a, in a residential area, it's a 50-foot frontage.
Yeah.
In a commercial area, it's a 75-foot frontage.
Well, in this district...
For that district.
For that district, yeah.
Some other districts may be 15 or 20. I, I haven't looked at...
No, you're correct.
Right. In that district, because of the traffic, because it's got two highways, because it's...
So the, so the other thing that we take into consideration is the, the neighborhood...
It's a little more built into that setback, though, because originally, when they, then when they rezoned that area to the whole commercial district, they were planning for frontage roads.
I understa- I, I know all about the...
You know all that, so...
I do. Frontage roads right by, right by CNE Autobody, right by the radio station, all that, Joey LaRusso's land, all frontage road.
And then that was stripped out.
I get it. On that side.
The, the whole thing.
Right.
Right? So...
I get it.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, in the, we take into consideration the neighborhood. Are there other buildings or structures that are similar to this that are, have already passed variance, are already 25 feet from the road or 30 feet from the road? Would this, would this look totally out of place in the neighborhood? And in, from what I've driven down and by, everything seems to be in the proper setback, and there's no, there's nothing that's not set back properly in that whole area down there, all the way up to the Rantham Line and all the way to Walpole, um, and Foxborough, if you go down into the residential areas. And I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time saying that I'd like to see a structure within 75 feet of the, the roadway, but...
So, Chair, back to Rich's comment on the, the frontage roads, which are not required, but if, if they were required, and they're not, if you put a frontage road in there, you still wouldn't have room for these canopies. So the, whether the frontage road issue is moot, you know, the comment about the zoning change is, is really moot, because if you put the frontage road there, there'd be no room for the canopy there.
No.
You'd need, you'd need vehicular movement and so forth, so...
Correct.
So we, I understand, you know, your comment about 75 feet because you were anticipating frontage roads, but it wouldn't be a front, if there was a frontage road there, you still wouldn't fit it.
Yeah, I, I can't think of...
You couldn't fit it no matter what the setback was.
Yeah. I can't think of any structure down there that has, I mean, obviously, this has a variance to get within five feet...
Right.
...of setback.
Right.
Somebody gave a variance for this, bound to be built as a variance five feet already.
Either that or they came in with a...
Because, and, you know, you want to drive by there, it looks normal, right?
It does.
The building's in the middle of the lot, the driveways come in both sides.
I even thought...
Now put a big structure in front of it.
I even thought Norfolk Glass might be too closer, but it doesn't.
That's a, that's a old...
I know it is, but it's still set back quite a ways.
No.
But that's, that doesn't comply, though.
I, I agree.
It doesn't comply with the 75, but it's pre-existing non-conform.
No. I know, they were just talking about where buildings were setback, not...
Yeah, no, I get it.
Right, from the streetscape side, just...
Which is on the opposite corner, so...
So the smaller the building, the...
Correct.
...the noticeable on the setback.
I don't know, I just, um...
Could I ask the applicant?
Sure.
If, if there weren't aquifers, if, if none of that existed, wetlands and aquifers here, what would the plan look like?
It would probably look different, yeah.
It would look different.
Oh, yeah. Because you can, you can move back, you can have options, you know, but right now, really, you're, for some reason, I think, whatever this building was developed, and they had to go through conservation for the notice of intent, and they were able to build within a 200-foot, uh, riverbank. Oops, I might have done that, yeah. So, uh, so, uh, this is the footprint of the, what was developed previously, and it, it's, it counts for 0.8 acres out of the two acres, basically, and, you know, and again, you know, the, the argument here was, and all along, when we first met, you know, we've been with this back and forth, prior, prior to filing with your boards, we had three or four informal meetings with, with planning, and we tweaked the design a few times, but always the...
Well, so let's clarify. So I want to add some to this. So it was not just the planner, it was the, there was the billing commissioner, it was the fire chief?
Everybody.
And they wanted that canopy further away from the building, so...
I, I agree, for fire protection, too, because we need to have this, yeah.
I think it's important for them as a board to know...
I get it.
Okay?
Tear the building down.
But I don't know where you put the building back up.
Not as big.
Yeah, you're gonna have to do a smaller building, and you're gonna have to move everything backwards.
So what's our money maker with this gas station? What's inside the building? Is it convenience or service?
It's, it's a convenience store.
And how far is our curb cut to Four Kicks, where all the kids hang out?
Uh, it's not very far.
No, it's all right.
It's not very far at all.
It's business after Norfolk Glass.
Yeah.
Right, Norfolk Glass and then, uh, Four Kicks.
Yeah. You talking about walking distance to it, or...
Yeah, I am talking about running across the street distance.
Yeah, well, yeah, the pizza shop across the street, too, so they can kind of cross the street to get to this...
Smaller value item, so...
I know, I know, but...
Sort of paths.
The crossing was still pretty same, though, I think, same crossing area.
There is no sidewalk there.
There's a sidewalk on that side.
Yeah.
There's a, there's...
On their side.
On the Four Kicks side, there's...
No, no, on the other side.
The Four Kicks side.
So you'd have to...
There's no access from Four Kicks by sidewalk to the crosswalk?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I have yet to see somebody walking over at Four Kicks.
I'm, I'm just asking, just because...
I've seen them cross the street to go pizza.
Okay, I haven't.
Yeah, I, I'm just asking simply because there's also a special permit for the use, and I'm looking at kind of characteristics of the use and who uses the property and how the property is accessed, which vehicular circulation is looking okay. Your pedestrian buffers look a little funky, but they are where they're existing.
Wasn't it only nine?
But, but as a use and what it attracts, I mean, the things that you look at with a gas station are always trip generation, because this is a more intense use than the, um, landscaping place was. Landscape place probably generated a couple trucks a day, maybe, and a couple of customers.
Hydro, hydro...
Hydro, it's not a very, I'm just saying there's a difference in your intensity of use and, you know, trip generation, because a gas station attracts vehicular troops, and so, but that's more of a planning, I mean, a lot of that's more planning, but...
I, I think that's probably their only option, is to take the building down.
That's...
But, well, I think the issue here is that it's not a binary choice between taking the building down or...
That's, that's a hard decision.
Or it having to be a gas station. Well, the use is in play and the variance is in play. Another business could occupy the building should the building be absolutely critical. It is the use itself that is driving the variance and the need for the pumps.
Correct.
And so, I mean, I, there's a gas station a few doors over, so it's not exactly like I would hang my hat on saying it's ass.
I mean, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of like...
But as a corner use...
I don't know, I don't know how we're, what, it's by special permit through us for a gas station.
Yep.
Whatever our criteria is for a special permit, what do we have to look at for...
Character of the neighborhood.
Character of the neighborhood, right?
And impact.
Usually health, safety, and welfare, and many more words than that.
Right, and so I'm, so I'm sitting here going, "We have one light in Norfolk, we have two gas stations." I'm not thinking, I mean, we have one gas station more than we have a light. We're not a metropolis. We, I mean, I don't understand why we need three gas stations in Norfolk.
That's not your criteria.
I understand, but...
You can have 50 gas stations, but I think it doesn't fit from the site, from the special permit, does it fit within the character and the other questions, and a lot of the planning board's gonna get a lot of those issues.
Yeah, and I...
And is the trip generation related to the use problematic, whether it's like vehicle turning sequences or, you know, the intensity of Four Kicks that's adjacent to it, or there's, you know, a few things happen.
The, the structure being that close to the road, to the intersection, I, I'm having an issue with. It's not necessarily the use.
Yeah, I, I agree. Personally, I think it's a great location for a gas station. Now, that's just me, and, and I, and I, that's why I was asking the applicant to help me out on, on the variance and, um, on soil conditions, and he's, and he's presented his, but he has, so, I mean, I, that, to me, it comes down to the, the variance in particular, um, and do we feel that it meets the criteria, and he's argued two points on that. I think the shape and the soil conditions, and I was focused more on the soil conditions rather than the shape.
What's the official address? Because I have...
One Pine Street.
Pine Street. What's, what's the zoning?
C.
C.
Do you have C1, C2? Okay, C1.
C1.
We have guests tonight. Do you think anybody in the audience has questions, or Chris, maybe?
Chris, do you have any questions for them? You're muted.
You're muted.
Muted.
You're muted, you have to...
I like it when you yell, though. Yell more.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Any, anybody in the audience or anything?
No. What's currently at the site now?
Just a, uh...
Transit seating.
A hydro seating building that I don't know if it's being used. It might be being used for storage or something at this point, but...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Finally unmuted.
Hey! Oh, I see, it's right at the corner, it's right at the corner, yeah.
The only question I have, you know, that, that corner, we were talking last time in this presentation, they, they were going to put in some shrubbery and stuff, and I see that as obstructing the vision around this corner, it's a busy intersection, particularly when four, when the sports facility is in full operation, it's very busy.
You're correct.
So, I mean, that, that, that building is not going to, like, you know, is that, is.
They're gonna, they, they want to leave the building that's there.
Okay.
And put the canopy.
Yes.
Between the road and it.
In the setback.
In the setback, which the building's non-conforming already to the setback.
What type of vegetation is being proposed on the corner, and what's its general height?
Do you know what the?
Yeah, we have, we have.
Chris is asking about sightlines, I thought.
Trees, yeah.
What's existing, there's.
And there's some existing trees today.
Existing trees there now.
That would be more the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more planning.
There's a little more planning board, but there are existing trees there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned with the, with the setbacks and everything than the actual use of the property, but.
I, I'm still a little concerned about, I, I know we heard just a few minutes ago about the, the well is not used anymore, but what other water, what other water uses in that aquifer, that, that provides the water to the aquifer, doesn't it?
Correct.
Yes.
And the Charles River.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, that goes up.
It's not just the well.
Correct.
And the well, I'm sure is still open and not sealed, but I'm sure it's not active, so it doesn't have a pump in it, but it still has an open, I'm sure it's not been sealed.
And I think that would go more to the applicant's argument, that he's trying to keep everything away from that.
Yeah.
That, that goes to his argument, I believe.
But the fact that it's a gas station kind of swings right back in the other direction on that argument, though, like, it's, there's a reason that there's buffers around aquifer and water supply.
No, I think that's what, I think that's what he's, talking about speaking.
Outside the buffer, that's why we're.
That's what he's sensitive to, and that's why he's asking for leaving the setback.
Yeah.
Okay, not speaking for him, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm saying, they're not necessarily best buddy adjacent uses, but not illegal either.
Right, right.
A question I have, the gas station, which is a little further down, down, what is it, Route 1, 1A?
Yes.
Did it have any, did it have to have special tanks, you know, like we're having, like this, this design would have, do you know if it?
All, 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 all gas stations have to have the special tanks.
So that's the same design, right?
They'll all have the same.
Yep.
Fabricated wall tank.
And the leak, and the leak detection and all the rest.
Oh, yeah, all that, yeah.
You can't put a gas station in without it nowadays.
No.
I don't think anybody would want them to.
No.
No.
I don't have any more questions, if anybody else has any more questions? Well, thank you very much for coming, we'll have a, we'll deliberate over it, and I'm, I'm having a hard time with the variance on the setbacks, the usage, I'm, I, I could kind of care less one way or the other, as long as it's all designed safely for the water and everything else and all that kind of stuff, but.
Questions closing the hearing up.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Before we close the, I just wanted to ask which one question, if we, before we close the hearing, I know you're dealing with multiple boards, conservation, planning board, is there, and this is, this is a big part of it, would you recommend which we keep this hearing, we continue this hearing, because there might be new information coming from one of the other boards?
So, the, in this particular, this project, the canopy, it's a gas station, so if there isn't.
They need it to soon.
If there's no decision, if there's, if there's an unfavorable decision on the canopy, the rest of it, it's kind of.
Unless they discover a different soil condition, and then, unless he gets a hill in the, in the next couple of weeks, I don't think that, that the factors for their variance argument are likely to change significantly with new evidence to another board.
That's all, yeah, I just didn't want.
Though, I'm not gonna bar a new hill forming.
Right.
Could happen.
Could.
I hope not, though.
And that would be man-made.
You know, I hope not.
So that means it could be removed also.
You never know, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bar circumstances unforeseen.
So essentially, if you, you know.
We can close the hearing and.
Deliberate.
We can deliberate then.
Yeah.
Yep, or you.
I, I, somebody should make a motion to close the hearing.
Is this a purchase? I'm just curious, is this, is this a purchase, or some sort of 100-year lease, or something like that, because you're.
No, the applicant owns the site, so.
He owns it.
I, I mean, if I may add, before you close, I mean, we're looking at this, right, so if you look at, you're concerned about the canopy, but if you look at the shape of the lot, because, because of the curve, and that what really throws everything out of whack, if you, if you say, but you are at 39 to the property line, but actually, for, for the actual road or the curb, you, you add another 15 feet here, at least, so you're 40, you're 55 here, and here, you are close, on, on Dedham Street, I would say probably another five, you're 20, but if I get a distance from this here to, to this, I mean, this is, I have a scale over there, I can take a look at, but this is 25 feet.
You're adding the right away.
Maybe this is 75 feet from the edge of the curb.
So your plan shows the lot line, but then you're talking about the pavement area.
I'm talking about the actual curb line, the street line, which not, that's not how we measure setbacks, I'm not saying.
No, no, I, I understand.
Because you have concerns about how close to the road, but really.
From a practical standpoint, you're saying.
You're 75 feet from this corner to the canopy.
From the, from the paved area.
Yeah, from the paved.
I understand with the right of way, yeah.
Well, it's the paved area, it's not necessarily the right of way.
I understand, he knows that, we know that, he's not, he's not even suggesting.
I'm, I'm just saying, one day we could decide to add a turn lane.
Correct, you could.
Yeah, that could be, I mean, you could add another turn lane.
Well, the state would have to do that.
Yeah, the state will have to.
Those are all state roads.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not saying it can't happen.
Not, not 115.
115 is not.
Could happen in probably 50 years from now or so, you know, could happen, I'm not saying it can't happen.
Right, right.
Well, I would hope that this business is so successful that it would drive the needs for a new turn.
Sure.
For your clients.
Any other questions, anything? Let's, somebody make a motion to close the hearing.
Anything else, I'll, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing, I'll second it.
All in favor, we have to take a roll call vote.
Joseph Asimov, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Cordahey, aye.
Chris?
Chris Metcalf, aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll deliberate and let you know.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have two cases, so I don't know if you advertised for a variance and special permit, or you did both of them at the same time, so.
There's two.
They're advertised together.
They're both, they're advertised as both.
Okay, all right, so you closed both cases.
We just closed both, yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, next. 14 Stop River Road, appeal the decision of Norfolk zoning enforcement officer, this has been continued since August, and has requested to continue till October 15th, and we'd just, I think, like to know why, if, if we could, if you, if you're here.
He's here.
I'm, I'm here.
Sure, you can have the floor.
Thank you, thanks very much for your time.
You have to get a microphone.
So, I guess, to level set for a second, and to, I guess, frame this for the zoning board again, at, where we live, at 14 Stop River Road, we're a butters to the Lakeland Hills project. As a butters to that project, we've had water in our basement, we've had a backyard that's destroyed, full of moss, which was not the case when we bought the house, we've had a property covered in dust, cars covered in dust, to the, that we, and the situation was so bad that the Norfolk Health Department had to come onto the scene and ultimately send a letter to the developer, setting out a number of changes that supposedly were to take place. Now, after, after this happened, after the onset of the dust, one of my sons was brought down to Boston Children's Hospital and was diagnosed with asthma. In connection with tests that were done during that visit, the results were anomalous, and the doctor at Boston Children's Hospital conveyed to my wife that the results were not the usual pattern for a straight asthmatic, which indicated that environmental factors were causing, or an environmental factor was causing his problem. So I have a son.
Do you mind telling us why you're continuing? This is new evidence, and you're asking to continue your, your case tonight, and so.
That's what I was wondering.
So instead of the summary, which we've had, and new evidence, which if we continue, you don't want to tell us tonight, could you just tell us why you've asked to continue? I, it's my understanding from an email that you've hired counsel, that's.
I haven't hired.
Oh, I thought you were, you needed a survey and counsel, is that our continuation?
Well, that was the.
Is that what I saw in email?
That's what I saw in an email, too.
Okay, is that correct? Is that the, is that why you're, why you were asking for continuation, was for more time for that?
That was one of the reasons that I was considering whether or not I needed to hire counsel, that's correct.
Okay.
But I, the reason, and, look, I, I can, if, if you're saying you'd, you'd rather I not get into the explanation, because this ultimately.
You've already explained all this, we, we're, the, the hearing's still open, so we've, we've heard all this, we have all this in documentation form, we already know what you've already presented, what we're asking is, why are you continuing it? Why?
But you're here tonight, so we can move forward if you don't.
That's what.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused.
Well, is he prepared to move forward tonight, because we had asked for more sufficient evidence?
Correct.
Like a presentation.
You're not prepared for the presentation of everything, is that correct? You need more time? Is that why you're asking for a continuance? I'm, 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 I'm kind of baiting it, but I'm, I'm also asking.
That generally is why I'm asking for a continuance.
Okay.
I think the, the broader issue here, and this is what I was trying to get to, is that, as you can tell in the zoning enforcement request that was made to the town on November 26th, and the subsequent one that was made in December, there's a lot going on there, and there's a lot going on there because we have withstood a lot, and we have had significant damage and in effect deprivation of our property because we are living next to this project. This is not something where I've heard a couple of backup horns, and I'm perturbed, and I'm gonna make, you know, a public spectacle out of it in front of the zoning board of appeals. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm an incredibly collaborative, collegial individual, so to get me to the point where I'm repeatedly having to come in front of a town board, things have gotten very, very serious, and we all need to take stock of, as a community, what happened here, because this should not happen to anybody else, and there was a fundamental breakdown in town government for this to happen, there should have been a full-time monitor up at that project, and there wasn't. If there had been a full-time monitor, this never would have happened, so what you forced me to do, as in a butter, and trust me, I don't have the time, but I've had to go through this comprehensive permit extensively, and try to understand, was the developer in compliance with X, Y, and Z, because if they're not in compliance with X, Y, and Z, it's reflective of why I've had all these problems. So my effort, when I filed that zoning enforcement request, was to flesh out my concerns about the fact that the developer has not been in conformance with the comprehensive permit, which has caused me, who has two young children and a wife, tremendous problems. I heard earlier somebody correctly saying that one of, probably the biggest responsibility a town has is to protect public health, public safety, and public welfare, that was not done here, and, and I'm collateral damage, I didn't issue this comprehensive permit, I didn't break ground on this project, I'm not gonna make a dime off this project, but I've basically been taxed and had my land taken, and, and my children are now sick, so we, so, so that was, that's all a way of saying, yeah, I need some more time, or we need to have a meeting of the minds about how we are going to go through this zoning enforcement request, which is very extensive, and get to a place where it's resolved. And I would just say one other thing, because we started this conversation back in June, and it got, it devolved, and it ultimately didn't get fully explored, but somebody asked me, you know, what in the zoning enforcement officer's decision is wrong? Well, a couple of things, the first thing is, he says that, to his knowledge, no one else has complained. Well, I had two people, two neighbors here with me back in June of 2024, in front of the zoning board of appeals, who both spoke to significant problems that they had. Now, I, I think they know that I did, I don't have the heart to ask them to come back, because I'm not gonna ask them to waste their time, but they were here and they spoke. I'm also aware.
The building inspector wasn't at that hearing.
Wasn't here, correct.
Is that correct, Mr. Carrigan? The question was, does relatives, this is an appeal, and help me if I'm wrong, this is an appeal from the building commissioner's decision, and you're saying he knew about these other complaints from that night, yet he wasn't here that evening.
And the only way he would know about complaints from other neighbors was if they came down and filed a complaint with him, or they sent him an email, but for them to come in here and sit at a meeting, he doesn't sit home and watch us, I can tell you that.
And that's okay, but I think.
The new one is right now, though, hi.
I understand that.
But I think the public has an expectation, and correct me, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but I would expect that the left hand in Norfolk town government should be talking to the right hand, and if in June 2024, you have a number of people sitting here telling you that there's a problem, I would think somebody who works for the town of Norfolk says to the zoning enforcement officer, hey, we got a problem, but those two instances are not the only two. So I have emails from a town of Norfolk resident, because it, there's, there's a separate litigation going on, there, in, I think it was June of 2022, a Norfolk resident emailed the town and said, the developer is starting work before 7:00, okay? So that went to the town of Norfolk, I mean, if it didn't go to Bob Bullock, it's not my problem. The, the town of Norfolk was on notice, he is, for all intents and purposes, on notice. Another person also emailed the town and said, hey, there's an erosion control problem, you gotta fix it. So there's two other things, and, and I, I don't, I mean, I haven't done a FOIA request on this yet.
All right, but let's talk, let's take a breath for just a moment, because again, we're just sticking to the specific appeal and the specific decision of the building commissioner that you were appealing. This is a multi-permit development, this is, as you said, a many-year-long project, there have been various impacts to you, potentially other neighbors, it's neither here nor there, whether or not there are more, because we're only here to hear your appeal, relevant to the building commissioner's actions. We need you to stay specific to the building commissioner's actions, instead of just your opinions about what has happened.
This is, no, what, what I'm saying is, part of the rationale for his decision is that nobody else has complained, you're the only one, and what I'm saying is, he has no rational basis, so if you have, you know, you have to look at this and say, okay, what is the rational basis for his decision, and how much credibility do I assign to him? And what I'm saying is, there's no rational basis, and part of his rationale for what, for his decision is that you're the only squeaky wheel, nobody else has raised any issues with this development, and what I'm saying is, that's actually not true.
But didn't you appeal the issuance of specific building permits, because the development Because the development has a master decision that is long filed, the opportunity to appeal that decision has long since passed. We're not here to hear about this total development, we're here to hear about the specific building permits for the specific houses that they're associated with, and why he was wrong to issue those specific building permits. Unless there is something about those plans for those houses that are at issue, we are not the appropriate or competent jurisdiction to deal with your problem. Do you understand?
So just to clarify, that, you already decided that last year, those permits?
Like, this is not our first appeal with you, this is, it's not...
The house is occupied, I think.
It's not the first rodeo to hear this out, you've been denied before. So if there's going to be new evidence and you want time to present it, I would suggest we continue and hear that later. Or we can, if we, if the board feels that we have heard enough, I think we can render a decision as to whether or not we think the commissioner acted appropriately.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Carrigan, and thank you for coming, the, to the point, I think you asked for rescission of those building permits. I think those, you know your neighbors out there, or maybe you don't, but I think those two houses are built, occupied, occupied permits, and they're privately owned, they're not, nothing, they're not being built.
Okay.
There's nothing to rescind there.
I presume everybody has...
I'm sure if I'm right or wrong, I'm going by the ad...
I will, but I'm just, I'm not sure what you're looking at, because...
I'm looking at your question about what the relief you're looking for. We respectfully request that you grant our appeal relative to the permits.
He wanted us to pull the permit.
For, it has it right here, for 11 Thomas Mann, is that the only one?
I thought there were two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, number nine and number 11 Thomas Mann. I think those houses are...
They're already occupied, I believe.
There's no, there's no open building permit to rescind.
Could I look at what you're looking at, just so that...
I'm looking at what you just drafted.
Your, your, your letter.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, 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 right here, right in your opening letter.
Sir, you're asking, that was part of the, not all of the relief, but that was part of the relief you were seeking. Sir, this is not, this is not the subject of the zoning enforcement request, and this is not the subject of what Mr. Bullock responded to. That, that is something that I filed in June of 2024.
Right.
You, we had a hearing...
So what do you want us to compel the building commissioner to do? Specifically, just like...
You know what?
It's not, I'm not being facetious, I really want to know what's the request.
This is attached to your submittal, that's why I went through it.
It's an exhibit in the submittal.
Right, so you...
But it's included, so that if this goes further...
So that relief's not being asked for?
There's context, yes.
What is the appealable event? The commissioner issued a letter saying, I'm not, I'm not doing anything with your complaints. There, so are you asking us, what is the instruction that you want us to give the building commissioner that you're requesting? I just don't understand.
I guess we're here to ask, what, what relief are you asking for this board against the building commissioner? Because you're here against the building commissioner, which we need to make a decision.
And the appealable events from the commissioner, as far as the ZBA are concerned, are the issuance of building permits?
Which is those two, which have already been completed.
And so if there, it, like, there's, the legal process that, like, backs up what we're doing here is, we're trying to understand where, what it is that you are trying to do with respect to that process, because...
We're not making a judgment on dust control and stormwater management and blasting and timber, we're not making a judgment call on that. You've appealed the building commissioner's decision.
He's, he's, he's appealing...
What? What's the appeal?
What is the event? Help us.
The lack of enforcement on the comprehensive permit.
From the building commission?
From the building commission.
Right.
The building commissioner said that...
Building commissioner is to enforce it?
So...
But, so we're just, as to enforce alleged violations that the building commissioner did not find, are we supposed to find that the building commissioner erroneously did not find violations?
No, the building, well, the building commissioner found there was no violation, so...
Right.
When he was there.
Right.
And he, and he's filed an appeal to that, so...
To say that there was a violation.
There are issues.
And so we are to instruct the building commissioner to look harder? Like, what is the instruction?
So I...
There's no instruction.
I would, I would venture to say what we're...
What are we doing?
What we're looking, if you're going to appeal a building commissioner's findings that there's no, nothing wrong, you need to have proof that there are violations there, so that we can go before our commissioner and say, there are violations here, you need to go and enforce them.
And I do have proof, and as...
That's what I'm asking for, that's what we're looking for, is what's your proof and what are the violations that you believe are in?
And, and to my earlier point, there's, this is, there's an extensive array of problems. Let's just focus in for one second on the start times and the stop times. So at some point, I got so ticked off, I'd go out there early in the morning, stand in my backyard, and videotape as they were working before 7:00 in the morning. And I would videotape if they would work after 5:00 or 7:00 at night, depending on what the month was.
Did you call the police so that there's a record of this?
I did.
Okay.
Now, I didn't, you know what? I, I finally got to the point where I was so disgusted, I dragged my feet, because personally, I think it's wrong that I'm in a position where I'm calling public safety, who have a very serious job to do, and having them go up there and deal with the fact that a contractor is working outside of their normal business hours.
Okay, but it is their responsibility to be the one that you call. So that is their job.
Literally what they do.
That is 100% their job. If somebody has a complaint against me at my farm, they call the police station, police come down, investigate it, write a report, and put it back, all right? I mean, I am very good.
And they encourage it, rather than peer-to-peer dealings.
I'm very, look, that is their job. And, and I'm a builder, all right? And let me tell you, if we stop before 7:00, and it's in a neighborhood, somebody's calling, and the police are usually here. Rob, you need to...
I've done it, I've done it a couple of times, but I've got the video evidence, so we don't need to worry about that. But I'm just telling you on principle, I think it's wrong that a butter is being put in a position of calling public safety. But setting that aside, now, if, if Mr. Bullock reasonably had followed up with me when I submitted these requests in December of 2024, in December of 2024, I could have come into Town Hall, privately showed him the video. Now I'm being put in a situation where, in order to prove my case, I'm having to come into a public forum that's videotaped and air video, which is going to include audio as proof of what's going on up there. Now...
No, I, I'll tell you what, no. You could bring that to the new building inspector, and he could watch it, and we don't have to, and we could hear from the new building inspector, his opinions of that, because we don't need to see that, as a...
It was, um...
All right, and he would be the one to go up and investigate this. Anyway, but I'm going to tell you, as a building official, you know, Bob's not going to come in before 7:00 AM to go up there and sit and watch for guys coming in, that subdivision, all right? Nobody's going to do that.
The police will.
Right, the police will. You have got to call...
Traffic detail while they're there.
That's right, and they can sit at the end of the road and radio. But look, if they, if they have a complaint that, you know, if you're calling every day, I'm going to tell you, the chief is going to get pretty upset, and he's going to get a hold of somebody and say, enough is enough, we're going to sit a car there, all right? You've got to make a case for it, though. You, you can't have, well, this guy showed up 10 minutes early and started taking the tools out of the truck. That's not running the compressors, running the generators, running all that.
I'm down, I'm down at my house, and this is happening up there, so this is not, you know...
I get it, and it's up over you, and the noise travels up over the top. I, I do, I know exactly where you're at, I live right around the corner.
And I hear all the noise on my butter also.
Yeah, I mean, we hear it all, you know, we hear all the blasting, you know?
Mr. Carrigan, I could ask you, I, I'm just going through the submittal again, maybe it's, maybe I shouldn't be, but that's what's in front of me, and I, and I came up with four major issues that you raised previously. I'll just categorize them generically. Blasting, erosion control, hours of operation, and dust control. Those were the four major ones that I came up with. There's, there's details within that. Is that fair to say, that those are the four major issues?
Those are, those are big ones. I would say, I would say, I don't know if you mentioned noise, if you didn't, I would add noise, and I would add vibration.
That was hours of operation and blasting, so whatever, subcategory.
You know, just to, like...
I guess my question is, today, a lot of these are, I don't think there's any blasting going on there recently, I think it's...
Blasting's done, as far as...
Done. I know there was an issue, I think there was an issue with, with the stormwater management plan, you pointed that out, and I think it's been filed.
And resolved.
And I think there was a drainage near you and all that, I don't know all the history as well as you do. And then, and then the hours of operation, you've documented a lot of that. And then you have the dust control issues. I'm just trying to find out, is there anything recent on this? By recent, I mean this year, this, in 2025?
I can just go a couple of days ago. So they were still hydraulic hammering last week after 5:00 PM, so they, they shouldn't be hydraulic, in my view, that should not be happening. Setting that aside, they were hydraulic hammering after 5:00 PM one day last week, and I got so ticked off, I did call the police, who responded, and the gentleman, you know, indicated that he was going to put in the log, that he heard it.
But that, okay, that's a good example, but what, again, comes back now, with those four items and those particular issues, what is it you're asking this board to do? I, I read this, I understand it, I'm sympathetic, I'm, your son could be sick.
Which I appreciate, and I can tell, and I'm very grateful. I, I think, look, these are like, so, being in a house, let's just focus on the vibrating for one second. Being in a house, they, they should have had constraints on what kind of vibrations were coming off of that project. And being in a house that's vibrating all day long, it's actually something tantamount to torture. And then you layer in on top of that, the, the extreme outrageous noise of an excavator breaking up rocks, and you're basically, you're, you're out of your house. So I have gone vast amounts of time where I can't be in my house, and where I, where I own a house, I should be able to live in it, and I'm forced to leave my house during the week and go into Boston. Now, it takes me round trip...
I understand all that, I'm, but I don't know what, as this boy, what we do on this, what you're asking of this appeal.
So indulge me then.
Can we pause just for one moment to read the question?
Please. You've asked for a continuance, and I would think that we should grant you the continuance, and the new building inspector has asked that you go and see him and speak to him about this.
Mm-hmm.
Go and do that, come back to us in a month, and let's, let's, let's hear what happens after that. Okay? If you, if you, if you, if you're okay with that?
I'm good with that.
We don't, we don't need to go back and forth anymore, because in reality, we don't know what we're supposed to be doing, and it sounds like you have issues that need to be enforced by an enforcement agent and/or the police department, and so I think you need to go talk to him. He's, he's asking, he's online, and he just sent us a note...
Online asking you to come in.
And he's asking you to go in. So I, I, I think that might be the next step that we need to do, and, and let's go that route, okay?
Sounds reasonable to me.
So we'll, we'll continue this until further notice.
I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing.
Second.
All in favors, roll call.
Aye, Joe Sebastiano.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
October 15th.
Yeah, October 15th. October 15th, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Honestly, we, we really don't like a butters to, to have to go through what you're going through, so I want to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just need to get in the right vehicle to get there.
Yes.
I really appreciate it, very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
57 Everett Street. Special permit to allow for an addition at 19.8 feet instead of 25-foot setback.
Tim's going to read it.
Tim's going to read that?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law, in any, in all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals on Wednesday, September 17, 2025, at 7:05 PM, room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Libdulane, Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Matt Palmer, MMP Construction Inc., requests a special permit to allow for an addition to the home at, to the home at 19.8 feet instead of the 20-foot side-yard setback...
25-foot, yep.
25-foot side-yard setback, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, as amended in the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw, Section 310-6.4-A Sub 2, nonconforming structure. The property is located at 57 Everett Street, assesses map 25, block 87, lot 3, in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're open. 57 Everett Street, I believe we have a Matt Palmer or somebody else on?
You do.
Yes, sir.
All right, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Matt Palmer, MMP Construction, reside at 27 Henry Taylor Street, Salem, New Hampshire. We're here tonight to request relief from the side yard setback for a special permit, where 25 is required, and we would like a setback of 19.8, to allow for a mudroom and a garage addition with a family room above and a paint studio, with an additional bathroom. The construction fits in with the neighborhood, it's a typical ranch, it's in harmony with all the other houses around. The other side is not an alternative, just due to septic tank, leach field, and obviously the side yard setback on that side is a lot closer. I'm free to, I'm open to answer any questions, if anybody has anything.
Any neighbors here?
So this is, this is a proposal for a, a two, two-car garage with a, a living area over it, correct?
Two stories.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
We got a plan of the house?
It was, it was up there a second ago.
There's, there's no garage there now, correct?
No, there's no garage there now, it's driveway. The driveway's already in that location, so for obvious reasons, the right side having more stringent setbacks, and the driveway already being placed on the left side, it makes it the least impactful to the client.
Yep.
And the setbacks.
So, so you're adding two-car garage, plus you're adding a mudroom, a hallway, a closet, so the only thing that exists is from here over. You're adding a garage...
Yes, sir.
Plus this.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That make, that's a little bit different. What's the, what's the actual proposed addition diameter? So the, the actual, how long is it? Is it...
22 feet by 20...
The garage is 22 feet wide, we get an extra, three, four, and then we're missing a dimension, probably about another five.
What's that bigger, what's the big one in the back?
The garage is 22, all the way to the, to the mudroom.
But this is 22 here to here.
It does, you're right, so this number's wrong.
Yeah, that number's totally wrong.
26 here, 22 here.
Because that's a...
There was some amount of width on a stair.
Three and a half.
Three and a half and three and a half, seven feet, seven feet, 22, 29.
So the mudroom area is seven feet?
Yeah, roughly.
Yes, the mudroom is seven feet.
Seven feet, I believe.
And then the garage is 22?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The site plan shows it going out 35, total of 35 feet. See? 35.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. Site plan back up.
On the front corner, it would be...
Yeah, right there, that drawing.
See that?
Yeah.
That shows a 35-foot addition.
From the back corner.
Yeah, why?
And then 30 on the front and five.
Pretty close, too.
That doesn't match. I think your front corner might actually be conforming, if the site plan is wrong, but the plan is correct.
I'm texting the architect to verify that measurement.[1742.21]
Okay. Because if...
Well, 25 feet.
If it's what it measures on the plan.
That's five, that's 37.
Yeah, if it were actually 30.
And how's it square? That's 30.
If it ended up actually only being 29 feet, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it probably really be like here, and that's why it's designed to here, and then it, because of the angle of it?
No, the total, the total mudroom, if you look at the foundation plan, is, uh, it comes off 11 feet.
Okay.
So it is, it is 35, yep.
Yeah, 35.1.
So what's the hardship?
So there is no hardship.
There is no hardship, cause it's a special permit.
It's a special permit.
Okay.
So, this is one of our nonconformities?
So, so because you wanna build the addition...
And the nonconformity is where?
I wanna build a bigger addition than our lot allows.
Than the lot allows.
We, we're here for a special permit.
Okay, so where's our, our spot that, is this the nonconformity right here at the existing structure?
What makes it nonconforming?
Lot, it's, uh, 55,000 square feet.
Oh, it's undersized.
Yeah.
So it's already nonconforming.
Right.
So, take it in five and a half feet, and we don't have to have a decision.
That is correct.
Right? Take it in five and a half feet, cause I don't see...
I, I don't...
I'd like to build my house 30 feet longer, too, but...
Well, he's only asking for a, he's asking for a special permit, not a, you know.
I get it, but...
Is, are there any abutters here?
Yes, right here.
Yeah, I'm near a butter.
Okay.
Are you adjacent to a butter?
What side?
We need a name address for the record, he needs a microphone.
At 55.
Okay.
Gotta help out our adoring public.
I'm Rick Smith at 55.
On this side?
I'm over here.
Okay. It's way over there.
Now, this, this is a, like a, the big pines?
Yes.
And then my septic is here, and my well's back here. I believe his well's in the back. I'm pretty sure his septic's in the front.
His septic, it shows in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, his septic's in front.
So you have any concern with this?
So my, my septic is over here.
Yeah.
As long as, you know, the only thing, I think he's gonna be taking out like three of those big trees to do this.
Do you know, you mean along, along the lot line?
Yeah, um, they, actually, they run in between our house, and then it branch, some of them branch off onto my property here, and a bunch of them go into the back of his property here. That's the real old growth. Um, the problem we're having in the neighborhood is, there was a bunch of them over here.
Yeah.
And one over here, and in the storms, they began to snap down.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and that's because they're losing the cluster.
Sure.
And they've lost the cluster or the windbreak way down at the corner over in Valley Street.
Yep.
So the whole topography of the neighborhood's changed with the wind, and my only fear is with these trees here and taking those out, should I take mine out, too? Otherwise, they might come down on his addition.
How far away are you okay with the, the encroachment?
Well, yeah, it's, you're talking, what, five feet?
Yeah.
I don't think, it's all wooded.
It's a little more than five feet.
I don't know, but, you know, it's all kinda wooded in between the two of us, anyway.
Do you have a GIS?
Those trees go out.
Do you have a GIS screen shot?
Yeah.
Existing driveway right now, 457. Existing house.
So would you like to see those trees stay?
Yeah.
I mean, he could take it down without this, but he can...
I've been in that house 30 years now, so.
No garage is there.
Those trees are old.
He's wooded.
Yeah, they're pretty big trees.
That's existing house, garage is wooded.
It looks like they're all Scott Spines, and they're pretty big.
Yeah.
They're like, I'd, I'd say, I used to tree climb, so I'd say about 120 to 140.
Oh, yeah, they're tall, they're like mine.
Yeah, they're big. But, yeah, I mean, I know what he wants, and they're good neighbors.
I mean, I'm looking at the street view of the house right now. If they put that addition on, you, I don't think you'll, it'll be any more visible to you than what's already existing there, unless they take down a lot of the trees.
It's going two-story?
Yeah, it's gonna be two-story, so you'll, but those trees, like you said, they're, they're like a...
Yeah, they're, they're really, they're...
They're, they're up there. They're, if you're a crow, you're getting nosebleeds.
The only thing, other than the foundation, the path outside, I don't know what does the tree roots, so, but I think they go pretty deep up there.
Yeah.
I think they do. But other than that, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking.
For speaking. Um, this is a special permit, what do we have? I'm gonna bounce back to you for our criteria for a special permit.
No, it's not on there, Mike, so if you wanna... Special permit, you wanna look at that first?
That's his house over there.
That's the, that's 57.
That's the subject property.
Right, and the left is...
And then his is the one to the left.
55.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, still left in that one.
Want to see Pam. Gives a little better perspective, right?
Yeah, those are large.
This is for the applicant, if those, if you, if the intention is to take those trees down, is there any plan to do any plantings there?
I don't know how much.
I think there's a bunch of...
There's one tree that's, that's in the way, um, and a couple rhododendrons, and the tree that's there is already leading towards the, the house that's existing.
Look in this area?
One leaning in that picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue.
Is that one right there?
I don't really have an issue with it either, and the, the butter doesn't have an issue.
It's a lot better that way.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
You can take and bind without those.
I appreciate that the applicant took the time to speak with their neighbor beforehand.
No, I, I mean, they are, they're great.
That's good. All right.
All right.
I'm closed.
Um, you have anything else to add, Matt, or anybody?
I don't, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, thank you also for having a butter coming.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for 57 Everett Street.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, roll call it.
Aye, Josephus Fasdano.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Chris McCaffrey, aye.
Josephine?
Josephine Kudari, aye.
Thank you.
Do we have a decision for them?
No, I didn't prepare one of them, no, sorry.
Do you guys wanna...
Um, we could, we don't have any other appointments, we only...
Wanna deliberate this one first?
This is the only, we deliberate tonight, just one.
This is the only deliberation tonight, yeah.
Tonight.
Do we have any other business we wanted to clean up before we...
Do we continue Pine Street, or do we close it?
We continue.
No, we close, we close.
Close it, we deliberate that one, too.
Oh, good, yeah.
I was just like, I was just like, I could swear there's more than one.
Yeah, let's, yeah, two.
Put these sweaters on.
The other business, and then...
Let's go to the new old business before we deliberate, um, only because, only because we have individuals that are here. I think Dave, you wanna introduce yourself? David Kulakowski?
Kulakowski.
Kulakowski?
Oh, there he is now, perfect.
Oh, well, you can see him.
Hey, guys. Uh, so first off, my apologies for not being able to be present tonight. I was looking forward to coming in and meeting the board, and, um, you know, just kinda getting to know you all. Um, I was listening to the gentleman for the development, and, um, I'm happy to meet with him, and as soon as he comes in, I'll connect with Rich, uh, or any one of you guys, and I will get the information regarding what, what the project transfer, what everything is going on with that project and the development, and I will see what I can do as far as acting as a zoning enforcement officer on that project and get that taken care of.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome to Norfolk.
Welcome to Norfolk.
He'll have plenty of opportunity to meet us.
A new face, a new face.
That's right. Um, does anybody have any questions for David?
No.
No.
Is this your first building inspector position, or have you been a building inspector elsewhere? Just curious.
Uh, no, I, I, great question, um, I was, I started off in the building official community in 2022, uh, as a local inspector in Rockland and Norton. Um, I took a position in Kingston where I've been posted as the commissioner up until just last month, when I, I departed Kingston and I came over here to Norfolk.
Well, thank you for coming.
Appreciate you guys having me.
Appreciate it.
Were you in Rockland during the, the Danger Hall era?
I, I, I was not, I was not actually in, uh, Rockland during all of the political fiascos, I, I came in just after that.
That was some fun Muni mayhem.
It really was, yeah.
Well, David, we welcome you to the team, thank you.
Thank you, looking forward to working with you guys.
We, we don't have to do a lot in Norfolk, but there is some. And when it is happening in Norfolk, then, you know, it's usually something unusual, and you have to get involved.
Yeah, I've already, uh, I've, I've already solved a couple of complaints that we've had come in fencing, uh, fence complaints, and then, uh, noise complaints, so, um, kicking and using the knowledge that I gained on in Norfolk, uh, assuming, uh, Kingston here in Norfolk, and trying to solve them one, one day at a time.
Well, good, thank you.
What's your general philosophy about, uh, reasonableness and interpretations?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, but we need to know how flexible he is.
Baby steps, baby steps.
Baby steps, David.
What are your feelings on Red Sox tickets?
David, thank you very much for coming.
Very much, looking forward to working with you all.
Okay.
You're good to go.
You're good to go.
You're good to go.
You're off the hook.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm sure those were the questions he prepared for.
Discuss proposed zoning bylaw amendments for November 12, fall town meeting.
So, uh, council has commented about the nonconforming structure.
Oh, good. Planning board looked at it and had some pretty normal comments.
Yeah, the comments relative to town council is concerned that would create issues in terms of conflicting with the statute, so...
Okay, that's something more serious to look at, what does he think?
Yeah, so, um, so the planning board decided not to move forward on it, so we can revisit, so just kind of an update on that one.
What about the mobile home?
They'll move forward, so let's move forward, okay?
Like our real goals here.
If you look at...
We wanted standards, but we'll take mobile homes.
Yeah, if you look at the, so his comments are in the right-hand column on the nonconforming, so you can read through those.
Okay.
So you wanna...
I'm sorry, guys, I went on vacation, I haven't looked at this.
No worries, you can volunteer, so...
I, you know, volunteer, volunteer.
Volunteer, I understand.
You know, I'm not sending a bill, so I'm not paying attention.
So now you go back to...
We're now going into deliberations.
Yeah.
Um, let's, let's do, let's do 57 Everett Street first.
Okay.
Just because we have the butter still here, he might wanna go back and tell them yea or nay.
Okay.
Um, 57 Everett Street, we're gonna, some kind of echo, I think that's yours.
Over the mic?
Um, there we go. No, it's gone, it was, I think it was...
Hold on, I'll put it back.
Of course, it was Rich.
Yeah, I think it was Rich.
Of course, wow.
Um, so 57 Everett Street, that's the, the house that wanted the addition.
Yep.
Voila, there's your...
There's our criteria.
There's your criteria, how's that?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I would say the use is in harmony.
The use is in appropriate location, the appro...
Detrimental, the neighbors here confirming adequate and appropriate facilities for the operation of the proposed use, I guess, and if we're parking is good, then we don't look at the cars.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the master plan.
Not offensive, not causing any traffic congestion, site plan has been filed, that happened, use is appropriate, and purpose is consistent with the current master plan as most recent, I would think that this makes it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, anybody have anything to add to it, or not?
Just, just for the record, I'd like to add that we had in the butter who spoke, and, and he seemed to speak in favor of the project, and he was kind enough to note that there, that there's some trees out there that may be lost, and it may be a safety issue, but that's, that's just a matter of fact, but, um, I think he spoke in favor of it, and he directed butter, and he...
And it, and it sounded like they're gonna try to get by with just taking one tree down and some rhododendrons, so...
They were talking three.
Right.
Yep.
But I think he, he saw the wisdom in that.
Yep. Well, good.
Saw the price.
Saw the price of the tree removed.
There, there's many types of wisdom.
So, with...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say conditions regarding the special permit.
Registered deeds.
Registered deeds, as-built plan.
Yeah.
Uh, make sure the site is cleaned up within...
Yeah, prior to...
Yep, I think you gotta put that all in, it is...
I'll put it in the standard designation.
Pursuant to the application.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, are we, does somebody wanna make a motion to accept?
We don't have a decision to sign tonight, right?
No, we don't have a decision.
No, I'm taking, I'm taking your...
He's just asking what conditions we'd like.
So, would, would motion be to make the, uh, exist, the motion approve?
Yeah, motion approve the special permit.
Yep, and then we'll approve a decision once it's drafted. Authorized, well, we'll authorize the site, the signature for the decision, but we'll approve this subject to the standard boilerplate conditions as will be drafted in the decision. The motion will look something like that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the applicant's, um, application for a special permit for 57 Everett Street, um, and authorize it, let it be, decision be drafted, and we'll review it and sign it.
I second that. The roll call.
All in favor with a roll call, please?
Aye, Josephus Fasdano.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Kudari, aye.
Chris?
Chris McCaffrey, aye.
Thank you.
Great decision, board.
Thank you. He can, he can build his thing, there'll, there'll be an official...
If we sign a decision, he'll get notified.
Decision that gets notified, cool.
Yeah.
But he's, he's approved.
But he's approved, it's, it's...
Yeah, well.
Then you'll get notified.
Find out.
Yeah, he will. He'll find out that now he, now he's on the hook to possibly pay some money.
Some money.
Yeah.
No, the rates are coming down.
That's right, a quarter of a percent.
Well, we just didn't though.
At least in the right way.
They did go the right way.
Pine Street.
One Pine Street has a special permit and a variance. I think we should take this as two separate, because they are two separate. First off, let's, let's go with the special permit, um, 'cause that's.
Could pull up our criteria.
The criteria that we just used for that, um, I don't think it.
I think you should go the other way.
It's not a bad location.
You think we should go the other way?
You think we start with the variance?
If we start with the variance, we don't have to make a special permit, possibly.
You're probably right.
That's right.
But we're not against it have, we're not against the gas station there?
The use?
They, they need to take a bill now.
The use in harmony of the general purpose of the intent is, I, I think they can, all of the, the appropriate location, everything I think for a gas station meets the criteria. I don't know if the lot meets the criteria, but in reality, the special permit side of life, you could, you could put a gas station there if it, if the lot would allow it. I don't have an issue with a gas station there, if the lot allowed it. I don't know if the lot allows it, because I don't believe the variance.
I think the lot allows it, just the building gets in the way.
Yeah, I think the whole, I, I think the lot would allow it if the building wasn't there.
They rented the building, so they could do this. Yes.
They probably should have requested withdrawal of the special permit before they walked out the door, 'cause then you're gonna have to make a decision.
Yeah, oh, we will.
No, no.
Well, I mean, just saying, like, they could, you know, there's people who put the store in the middle, canopy on either side and have it attached. I understand fire separation and why, like, why the request is there, but like, at this.
But you're trying to put 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag.
Well, it just.
I think he's trying to put 15 pounds in a five-pound bag.
You, you don't have the parking, you don't have the parking there.
The existing building is.
To deal with the convenience, though.
It's too big for.
You have nine parking spaces if they, if they tweak it.
But that's a limit.
Well, maybe 11, they're too handicapped, that's right.
They just have a miss, a building imbalance where they have more store than they kinda need and it's eaten up the square footage of the site, pushing the pumps to the front.
That would be a very busy gas station. The one down the block is a busy ready, sometimes even the pumps available.
I always, I always wondered that. I'm like, where do all these people come from? I'm, I'm here at a weird time and I can't even get into the pump.
That has three entrances as well.
It does.
Two off of, uh, 1A and one off the police station road.
Yep.
I mean, I always go in through the police station to go to the diesel.
Yeah, but it's very busy, very busy.
The grade coming up of 1A is really steep.
It is, it is steep coming off of 1A.
And just, I'm, I'm sorry, but between that storefront and the corner of the road, there isn't a lot of room there.
No.
You're talking about putting this.
No, we, we, we can't, we have to deliberate and so the hearings close, we're not supposed to be, that's okay. Thank you, though, but.
You can paint a gallery with one of the gentlemen, not more than one, lots of quorum, but you can talk to them after about.
I'm hearing a future board member.
Yeah, I do, I think so.
They think the retention of the building is the highest priority and so the retention of the building is driving the rest of the site design. But this board does not seem to share the sentiment that the retention of the building is the highest priority and so.
Does it have any historic?
No.
No, it's not a historic building, it's nothing. It's not that old.
Just to clarify, just.
No, but I mean, I'd be willing, I'd be willing to buy that the neighborhood is attached to like the barn or an act or kind of thing, but that's not a.
Now he's building.
Well, that's true, that's what it is.
It's a post and being.
But they could, they could build back something that's similar in kind of look and feel.
So have they taken any concessions on this, or am I with this conclusion?
It's a post and being.
I'm not sure what meeting that they went to where they were told that it was important because I wasn't there, but that doesn't mean it wasn't the.
So, I think in the last, the last zoning board meeting, I said, oh, is that the barn, is that the red barn site?
Yeah.
And at that point, he kinda took that as, oh, yeah, see, it's a landmark.
It seemed to be a preconceived notion, though, that they came in with prior, I wasn't sure if they saw the board like five years ago and was just.
No, 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 no. No, this is, this is a recent owner.
Okay.
He just bought.
Yeah, no, this is a recent owner.
Okay, well, again, I just wasn't sure if the, like, who, 'cause they said the board had conveyed it and I was just like, is it this board, was it the planning board?
I don't know, they've, they've had some other.
Is my tenure not long enough to know?
So let's, let's do the variance first. Do, do we believe that the lot and soils are bad enough that this is the only place that they can build on the lot?
Okay, so we're looking for a condition that is unique to the lot in the zoning district that is related to the soil condition that is causing a hardship.
Correct.
Because we're not convinced by the shape of the lot. I have to definitely follow on that because every single lot on this corner actually has that shape in a commercial use and they are muddling through yet. I, um, so I don't think that there's a shape issue that is unique to the zoning district. There's obviously not a topography issue, so we're really looking at soil condition. The soil condition that they're presenting is wetland soils and we have a couple of buffers that they're subject to. There's the riverbank, uh, there, there's the river buffer. You could argue that that's technically a wetland soil, given that it's water. They have wetlands themselves, or I believe they have, yeah, they have wetlands too. That is a legitimate soil condition, um, but I don't know, that, that constrains like a back portion of their site, but they still have like vehicular circulation in that area, so it's not like, it, I wouldn't say it's a total constraint on the site because.
Because they're still using.
They're still using it for.
The buildings, the buildings are.
Well, I mean, there's.
They're just not gonna put their gas pumps in.
And so I, um, I mean, I could.
It seems like we're saying it's a self-created hardship because the building's there.
Right.
I have a.
The lot was what the lot was.
It's a great site for a gas station, that's my personal.
Are they allowed to building, build a building in zone two?
Allowed to build a what?
Uh, maybe a single-family home with a permit.
So if they tear, if they tear their building down.
That's just a corner that's in the buffer.
Yeah, they put it on that, that corner, on that spot. They have to shrink the building to the size.
Yeah, but the, the, the 200-foot buffer or whatever it is of zone two, for the aquifer, can you build in that?
Yeah, they.
They did. The red, the red building is in it.
Yeah, obviously.
But if they tear it down.
But was the buffer zone two increased?
I don't think they can go back up.
We let them build it there. The buffer's been there forever. That, that place has been wet forever.
I'm, I'm not arguing that. What I'm saying is, going forward, if they tear it down, is, they have to come back for variance in order to build in the zone two, right?
If they're gonna put it in the wetland?
No, you're talking about the zone. Hold, let me, I'll.
The aquifer is zone two. I don't, I believe they had to, they had to get something special in order to be in zone two. They can't put the pumps in zone two.
No.
He was automatic about that.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't think you can even build in zone two.
Well, you can, but it's limited.
It is very limited.
Limiteded to single-family homes?
Uh, we could pull, so, what, what, let me do this first, I'll just put the zone two and show you, just so you can see.
It's past your bedtime, isn't it, Mike?
It's definitely past mine.
It's over here by you, Courtney. It's on the, well, if you want.
What is it?
It's on there.
It's over here.
I can't even remember what I was looking for now. Oh, the zone two.
Yeah, I'm showing it on the screen, though.
Oh, you have it over here?
Yeah, it's on.
I wa, I was just hoping it would be on the plan, you know?
All right, well, just, you know.
He did have.
Matches your shirt, though, at least.
It's gone.
Yeah, that's most of the site.
Yeah.
I mean, zone two exists for a reason.
So then we go back to.
Drinking, water supply, like, we're not supposed to be, you know, running off a bunch of trash on it.
I think it has a good use as it is.
But doesn't that make his argument, though, help his argument?
No, because the buffer is because it's a detrimental use to public water supply.
That's a different issue.
Or detrimental, like, the idea, though, is that any structure is a detriment, like, basically, any structure, any intensity of use beyond.
But if he's impacted to such a great degree by soil condition, R2, isn't, is, doesn't that support his argument?
Well, I think the issue, though, is that when you look at the actual location of zone two, the site is not a terribly buildable site. That's not, the standard of hardship isn't that, you know, maximum economic value. We're not looking for a taking or anything like that here. The only standard is the buffer exists for public safety with respect to drinking water. It's none of our interest to have to clean a bunch of pollution out of it, it's expensive. And so the idea is this zone exists because it's supposed to dictate low-intensity use. A gas station does not fit that bill. And I would say that it's not, it's the actual hardship itself.
What's with your argument not to support a special permit?
I mean, in some ways, I, like, in some ways, I don't think, I mean, our special permit criteria is what it is, or I think the thing we can most hang our hat on is traffic, and I don't think that's a great.
No, no.
But I think the spec, I think the use, I do think that there, you know, it's a fairly high-intensity use that has contaminants that, yes, are, you know, the tanks are tight, but you're still gonna get runoff when, you know, there's dribble, it's not, you know, there's still going to be issues. The hose connection still can, you know, there can be problems.
He's not asking for.
The point, though, is just like, what will it run off to?
We never would get a use variance, but he's asking for a variance from setback. Whether it's a, whether it's a pump or something else, it happens to be a, a pump.
Yes.
Well, it's a canopy.
It's a canopy, actually.
The canopy.
It's a area.
I don't think the pumps actually.
No, it's the canopy, right.
Yeah.
But, so it's not, he's not asking, obviously, he's not gonna get use relief, but he's asking for a setback relief. And he's, and he's just saying it's because of the soil conditions that that's, that's limiting where he could, that, that's the argument.
Yeah, but I think what we would say is that soil.
It's the most convenient to put it in the front, 'cause you don't have to remove the building.
Right, no, I, I agree.
If you move it back and you put it where it belongs and you move the building, okay? So, I, I, I mean.
The building's in the way, I understand.
I think the presence of the soil conditions, I do believe that it limits the site, but I don't think that it limits it in the way that creates.
A taking.
A zoning hardship. It's a way that, you know, it's just like, it's the one thing that we do where it's paramount, public safety.
You need to think of it this way, there's a business there that runs, so what is the hardship? There's already an existing business that runs and.
I agree, if you make a decision, you want it to act it the right way.
Yeah, I, I don't see a variance acceptance there, because it doesn't seem to be a hardship at all. It's, it might be a, a new way of economic money stream for them, but that's it. It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's not a binary reuse option, it's not this or nothing.
I think most of us agree it's a great site for a gas station, but the lot just doesn't support it.
But the lot just doesn't support it.
Well, it doesn't with that building on it.
He did ask to, when they closed the hearing, that, you know, include that the special permit and the variance mean, we can still say we agree with being a gas station, but we can agree on the variance and the canopy going where it proposed.
Oh, yeah, but.
Is it?
That's fine, that's, that's where, that's where I was heading.
Yeah, we could go there.
That's where I was heading.
I would, I.
No, I don't have a problem if you put a gas station there, you set it back and you make it look nice and, okay?
Is the building rented or something like that?
Is it what?
No, it looks like it's just being used for storage.
He stores.
I think he's just storing stuff there now.
Right, but we can give him, we can say yes to the special permit for the use, that's, that's what it's best.
That's the inclination.
But it can't say the variance week. But it's a special permit relative to that plan.
Correct.
Right, right.
And we could look at the use independent just as a gas station use and say, conceptually, we see that the grounds for a special permit for the use have.
We're not approving the plan.
Been met, however, we don't feel that the grounds for the variance for the structure.
Right, the use.
Yeah, so your decision can say we would approve of the use of.
I don't think it's, I don't really think it's an issue of expense, I think that they were considering their approach because they thought that the loss of the building would cause.
It's still kind of, still a cleaner fee of drawing the special permit.
It would've been nice if they had.
Okay, they have a $500,000 building there that they could use as is or tear down.
Use in the plan kind of go together.
Another million dollars.
Yeah.
So, take a half a million dollar building.
We're not proving the variance.
Modify it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, obviously, like, yeah.
With a new site plan.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, that's, that's where it's going. I mean, it'll be.
The building looks like it's.
They would, we would prove a gas station with proper site plan.
There's no need for it to come down.
It's only a, it's only a sheet metal sound building.
We need one conversation.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna get in trouble.
You are getting in trouble.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's get back to.
Where, here's what I suggest. Take care of the variance tonight and then we'll work on the special permit, just so I can give you a little bit more.
Do you, but do, do you think it's possible that they go?
Only because you are okay with the special permit, but it kinda ties back to the plan. You know, you, you know, you, how do you?
So, so is it applied for on one application or two?
Two different permits.
Two different applications?
Well, we put them on one application, but you can.
Yeah, I think it's two, is a, it's two separate things, like, 'cause the use is.
It's one application.
It's one application, one set of plans. We deny the plans, but approve the use, the special permit for the use. That gives them the ability to go back and design a gas station. They have the, the ability to build a gas station, just not this plan for the gas station, because they don't find the grounds for a variance requirement.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
My, my concern is the canopy, so.
So if you were to propose to, if you were to approve the special permit without a plan, 'cause that's not the plan you would want to be approving, just the use.
The special permit is just.
Just the use, yeah.
We'll approve the use, that they can put a gas station there, but it can't be this, 'cause we're not giving them a variance.
Because the actual site characteristics that go with the use are part of site plan and that's in the planning board's domain anyway. So we could kind of punt on that and only look at the use exclusively, 'cause unless they're gonna do, I mean, I don't, I can't think of, they're not proposing different curb cuts or anything, they can't really move them, so.
So, my suggestion would be that we approve the, the gas station, the use.
Yep.
But deny the var, variance. And if they want to come back for another variance for a different application with a different plan, they can come back. But I would say.
Agreed.
Deny this plan without prejudice.
Yeah.
That give them the opportunity to redesign and resubmit without it being considered a repetitive.
All right, and that way there, they can still come back. They can do whatever they want.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Deny the plan without prejudice.
So I think we deny the plan, deny the variance, because we don't feel that the grounds for the variance itself or the structure are met. Even though the structure is required because of the use, it's not really use-related. If there's another way that they can do it, I, that works for everybody. I personally don't like the use on the site, but I'm willing to not die on that hill.
I would agree with, I agree with you, but I'm not a big fan.
I'm not a big fan of having a gas station on that site, but, but I don't believe.
It's the aquifer that is.
And I, 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 I mean, I watch this all the time.
It's a good location.
And a gas station, right? So there's the cement pad that we put the grooves in to capture the fuel, and here comes the kid with the pressure washer, and he pressure washes the concrete out right across the asphalt, and it goes into the aquifer. All right, goes right in the storm drain. I get it, that has gas oil separators, I get that, but it's still a gas station next to our aquifer.
I hear you.
And that well is open, okay? It is open.
It is. It's a freeway to whatever aquifer it is there.
If, if they have it.
You're really.
It's the hellwind.
Now you're going, now you're not in favor of the special permit, then.
But the, but in, but in reality.
I'm like, I don't want to get sued over the special permit.
But in reality, the special permit side of life, that, our job is to determine whether that use is okay for that lot.
Yeah.
And is that use okay for that lot? For the neighborhood, for everything else, a gas station on that lot would be fine, as as long as it meets all the criteria for the setbacks, for, for, for the wetlands, for the aquifers and everything else.
Right.
But the, but the actual use of a gas station...
The other boards are looking at this, too.
We're okay.
They might deny it.
Yeah, we're okay with the use of a gas station if...
They can get it far enough away from our aquifer.
If, if all things are put into place to, to put in a safe gas station on that lot, sure. But not with a variance. That's not what we're looking for. No variance at this point.
So to be, in terms of timing, right? The variance, I think you should act tonight.
Yes.
Why don't you just table the special permit?
Can we do that? Can we separate them?
Yeah, we can bifurcate them.
Okay, two separate permits.
All right.
And you don't have the time constraint on the special permit.
Okay.
You don't want to do that?
If we don't decide on the...
I'm not a fan of a gas station.
I'm not a fan of a gas station there either.
At the aquifer.
I'm not either.
So then you don't want to, don't deny the special permit, then, right?
Let's deny it both.
If that's the...
All right.
I, I agree with you.
That land has been there forever.
My, my...
And never been developed.
That's why I asked what a special, what we need to follow for a special permit. We're not the Conservation Commission. We're not the Planning Board. We're not them. Can a gas station be built here by special permit by the criteria we're supposed to hold it to?
Let's look at our criteria again. Let's do our point-by-point analysis, because we're gonna need to for a decision.
Look at, so if they want to put one at the corner of Stony Brook, we're good?
Well, you can't do it there.
You can't do it there. There's a waterfall.
That's an...
All right, all right, well, if this is something that we're even going to entertain denying, we have to do this by point.
So the special, special permit criteria is, unless otherwise specifically provided contrary, all permit grant, da-da-da-da-da, special permits. One, the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw.
We feel iffy about this, because the general purpose and intent is health, safety, and welfare. We think this might be a little iffy in terms of health and safety.
I think it's safety.
Correct. Two, the use is in appropriate location and is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. I, I would say appropriate location is not detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it might be detrimental to the neighborhood, because it's a gas station on wetlands.
On the...
And at the aquifer.
I would posit that the damage is too larger than the neighborhood level, but the town.
What's interesting, too, is proposing three pumps. There's four pumps down the road, and they're always very busy. This is a crazy, it'd be a crazy, busy gas station.
All right.
Number three, adequate and appropriate.
Let's talk about the character, too, because the pumps, this will factor in also with the location of the pumps and the fact that everything else has a conforming front yard setback, but this use is not.
But this is, this is special permit.
Yep.
This is...
I'm just saying that related to...
Number three, the adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use.
They're gonna do that.
Yeah, they have to.
Yeah, they have to. Third, four, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining, adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of the lighting, odors, smoke, noise, sewer, refuge materials, visual or other nuisances. I don't think that's an issue either. Five, that the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. I think that might, but...
It might, but we don't have a traffic site to hang our hat on.
Six, that a proper site plan has been filed for approval of the Planning Board and is required a proper number. Yes, I believe that's been met. Seven, and the use and/or the purpose is consistent with the current master plan as most recently updated.
I just have a question on two. It says that the use is in an appropriate location. Does, is location referred to the lot or the use within the lot? So is he talking about...
I think it's talking about the lot.
The lot.
I think it's talking about the lot. Like I said, in Stony Brook, you can't...
So we generally, generally...
That would be allowed.
In the sense that the board may think that that lot is not appropriate for a gas station. With that red building or not? That's, that's my question.
No, you're talking about, oh, is that the location?
If, if the red building wasn't there...
And you could put the pumps where you can put the pumps.
And you could put the pumps where you could put the pumps without a, without a setback and outside the R2. Could you find that the location is okay for a gas station?
I think it comes back to safety.
Right.
Use is in appropriate location and is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter...
Is that lot ever, in our view, appropriate for a gas station? I'm not saying that, that the pumps, the canopy there.
I, I...
This looks to be the trying, like, the rectangle of unencumbered.
Right.
But I will note that the pump house on the well is right here, so while it's a de, while it's a not active-use well, I'm not gonna say decommissioned to the front.
I would say if the building, if the building disappeared and all you were gonna put out there was a guy in a shack with, you know, four pumps, is that an appropriate...
And you could put it in that slot.
But is that, is that an appropriate...
Use of that?
Use of that property?
No, the question's appropriate location. Doesn't, you don't, you don't have to, to get to the value of the use. It's the appropriate location.
I would say that there is a very small appropriate location on the site.
Yeah, like that.
But I still think, I don't...
That's where they have to go.
So the question, then, is, is...
Isn't that related to the lot, though, not the, how it's sited on the property?
It's supposed to be...
I mean, realistically, how's...
Is it appropriate location for the neighborhood, is what I think number two is asking.
Right.
Because it says, is it, or is it not detrimental to the neighborhood?
It's the location and how it relates to the neighborhood.
Correct. And I, I think, I think a gas station on that lot is okay for that neighborhood. I, I don't have a problem with that.
Is the gas station down the street, are you talking with your, with the car washes?
Gas stations are in...
Yeah, everybody, every gas station's on an intersection.
Right.
Where Dunkin' Donuts is and the gas station, Subway.
Subway.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, cross from Carfax or whatever it is.
Cavona.
Cavona.
What is that, like, half a mile away or less?
Nah.
Not even a half.
So we go back to one. It's not, it's not within the intent of the bylaw, because it doesn't, it needs a variance.
Right.
What is the use?
I'm sorry, it's a special permit. Needs, well, it's, no, it's a special permit, okay. I'm just trying to go through them one by one and check them off one way or the other.
I mean, the bylaw, that's tricky, right? Because the bylaw does allow for that use.
Right.
Yeah, and I think...
In that district, right.
But it's conditional.
In that district, in every, in that neighborhood, I think a gas station's appropriate use.
Were it not for the environmental factors and the fact that there's an aquifer next door to it? It's just like, what's on top of the ground, yes, it fits in. What's below the ground, it does not.
That's not our job.
It's people's safety. Because if gas gets into the aquifer, it's, it's...
I do think that this is a factor as to whether or not the site is an appropriate location for a gas station.
Okay.
If it, like, if it were just...
I mean, if we, if, if we, if we can use that as part of the criteria, then I would say no. It's not an appropriate spot to put a gas station.
Say, for example, we approved them, which, we're just talking about it. Could they subsequently go on to the Conservation Committee and discuss the aquifer issue, or does that get settled here?
That's here.
That gets settled over there.
I think you kind of answered your question, right? So the location isn't appropriate because it's in the Zone 2.
I think because of the underground conditions as opposed to the, the surface conditions, it renders the site inappropriate. It's too constrained.
Because it's in Zone 2, it's not...
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate, because of the aquifer.
Pull Zone 2 out of there, put a gas station.
Yep.
Now, we're still, I'll talk about the canopy, but...
My understanding of a canopy is a tent.
Yeah, Mike. Who does the, who does the, who does the traffic study?
Chris goes question.
Planning Board.
No, that's by the...
Does it? An outside consultant?
We hired that outside consultant.
The applicant does a traffic study and we peer the planning board reviews.
I don't know, but I, I go in and out of a lot of gas stations. I travel a lot. Corner gas stations have a very unique traffic pattern, particularly if there are traffic lights. We've got a very heavy usage road at 115, and people are going to try and turn into this location, which is gonna jam up the traffic lights.
Oh, yeah.
Can guarantee it.
Oh, make left turns into the station?
Well, people cut through that side already.
Same on Route 1A. You got the same trouble on Route 1A. People are gonna be coming out of wall pole on that side of the road and want to turn into the...
Oh, my God, the wall poles.
And they're gonna block up the traffic light.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, he has already...
Who does that study? Who does that study? It's not our responsibility.
No, no, the applicant does the traffic study if the Planning Board requests it as part of site plan review, and then the Planning Board's engineer peer reviews it.
So if we can deny a special permit because of the aquifer, and this is not a proper use because of the aquifer, that's our finding. I would say that's good and right.
Well, you also have traffic, too, though, on the special permit.
Traffic is, is something that we can factor.
But I mean, if you go to any, if you go to any town that has corners, there's gas stations on those corners. So, I mean, a corner gas station is not unreasonable.
But they're also now blown up, and they're big, right? They, they, you know, they get away from the traffic light. They get their entrances and exits further back.
I hear you. I hear what you're saying. But it's, but I, I have a...
I would, I would stick, I think, your grounds are solid in the aquifer, because I could show you a corner gas station that...
Oh, I agree, too.
We all know you can.
Yeah, but, but the Zone 2 is definitely...
The, the thing I have issue with is the aquifer.
Yeah.
Well, I think the Zone 2 is actually the same rationale for both the variance and the special permit.
Right.
The reason that we don't find the grounds for a variance being met are because of the presence of the aquifer as well. It, you know, some, we don't think that the hardship is on the part of the developer. We think that the, or the applicant, the applicant would be creating a hardship for the town if we did not apply a literal enforcement of the bylaw.
Well, I don't, I don't believe they met the criteria for hardship. And so I don't believe a variance is needed, or granted, because they didn't, it's not, it's not a hardship.
Right.
David, is there, is there anything in our zoning laws that say anything about locations of chemical plants close to aquifers or, or gas stations close to aquifer? What do we have? Our friend Rich is going to look that up right now. I know, I didn't get a chance to look through, and that's, that's what we're really talking about. If it's actually in our zoning... He believes, he believes he has something, so. He's looking. He's diligent. He's typing. He's wiggling the mouse. He's got the, he's got the AI activity over there.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I think the underground liquid chemical storage is a problem in a Zone 2, but that's gonna be a different regulation.
So aquifer water supplies to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents, institutions, and businesses of the town of Norfolk from contamination, existence, public groundwater and surface water resources, to protect, preserve, maintain aquifers, recharge areas and groundwater, to conserve the natural resources of the town to prevent temporary, permanent, to comply with federal laws. I, I think the aquifer denial is 100% okay. You're in Zone 2, no, no gas station.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, and I think that's the basis, right there. That's the, that's the basis for the denial of the, the special permit. The basis for the denial of the...
Variance.
Variance is that they didn't meet the hardship criteria from our standpoint. There, it's not a soil issue, it's not, it just doesn't meet it.
So if you want to vote that, then I'll just prepare a decision for you for them.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to, take them separate? Make a motion to deny the special permit due to the aquifer? And then deny the variance separately?
And the plans associated with the variance.
Yep, yep. Somebody want to take a stab at a motion? Tim?
I'll make a motion that we deny the applicant's, uh, application for a special permit primarily due to the location of the site being in the R2 zone.
I'll second that. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Joseph, I think you know aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
Joseph and Koda, aye.
Chris?